Tonight, we've got a special guest. His name is Philip T. Cowan and he is running for BISD School Board Place One. Mr. Cowan, welcome to our show.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Cowan, could you kind of give us a little bit of background with respects to yourself? Who you are, where you've been, where you're from, what you're running for, and what you hope to accomplish over the terms should you be elected?
Okay, I'm, uh, first of all, I think the most important thing is my, my family, my wife and my children and my grandchildren. I'm married to Francis Cowan. We've been married, this year will be April twenty-third. It's Shakespeare's birthday also. Uh, it's, uh, which it makes easy to remember my anniversary because I was an English major. But anyway, it, uh, we'll be married twenty-five years.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. I, I have been a lawyer since, uh, nineteen ninety-seven and I met Fran right after I passed the bar. Uh, that December and we got married about five months later. I have four children, one with Fran and three, uh, when I was married before. Uh, my oldest son is fifty-one years old. He just retired from the service. His name is Philip Anthony Cowan. I'm Philip Thomas.
Okay.
And he, uh, served five or six tours in Afghanistan and Iraq. He won a Bronze Star and you don't get that for typing. Uh, and he was military intelligence. He speaks like six languages. He went to two language schools. So learned Farsi and Mandarin Chinese. Farsi is a language they speak in Afghanistan and in Persian.
Right.
Or Iran. I have, uh, two other children. My daughter Christina, she's forty-two. She works for a company called Qualtrics. They do, uh, but, uh, the stock is called Excer. But if you ever finished a survey, the, the, the company that does a really complicated hypoallute and algorithm determine trends in marketing and she works with that.
Oh, wow.
And then I have daughter Katie Cowan, uh, and she is, um, uh, one of the executives with a company called National Storage Alliance. And she's helped, uh, move in and buy all of the Move It, M-O-V-I-T, that you see around the valley.
Right, I've seen those.
My company, but she liked the valley as a market and so she went after it and they were very successful and they were very successful. And my youngest daughter is Amy and, uh, she just moved to Denver. She, uh, wanted to teach music over there and her fiancee, uh, has got a masters in, uh, professional counseling. And so she's trying to become a music educator. She hadn't been able to get a job yet because Texas took a little while to give her teacher certificate, but she got it this week. So hopefully by January, she'll get on board over there.
That's great.
And I have seven grandchildren, one who's, uh, twenty-one, going to be twenty-two, just slightly younger than Amy. Uh, my youngest, who's twenty-three, and he just is finishing his degree this December. And, uh, in, uh, December also, he is ROTC and he will muster into the United States Army as a second lieutenant.
Wow.
And I have a granddaughter, his sister Audrey Nicole Cowan, who will be graduated from high school this year. And the other ones are much younger. Uh, I have, Katie has two daughters, Adriya Torres and, uh, Delia Torres. And one's a junior and the other's, uh, an eighth grader.
Yeah.
Or ninth grader, I take it back. And then I have, uh, two, uh, three grandchildren with Christina. They live in a beautiful town called Sherman, Texas, and they just love it there. And they go to middle school there, both, uh, what was it, granddaughters? And then I have a new grandson, Captain Tadeo, uh, and he, and what was it? Uh, he is doing, uh, real well. It says Cova was the last name.
Yeah.
And he, uh, just turned three years old.
Wow.
Now, I, I'm from Brownsville. I've lived here all my life. I'm a descendant of, uh, some of the, uh, founders of Brownsville. William Neal was one of my great, great grandfathers. Neal Hall is still there. It's falling to pieces. I wish the city would take care of it, but I can't convince them. And another great, great grandfather of mine, Lou, uh, what was it? Uh, John Salmon Ripford bought the last betel of the civil war and wrote, uh, his memoirs that were published by the University of Texas in a book called Ripford's Texas. Uh, Neal's memoirs are called A Century of Conflict, published by what used to be A&amp;I University. These guys were literally brilliant people.
Yeah.
And, you know, Neal was the first legally elected mayor of Brownsville and Ford was mayor of Brownsville and mayor of Austin, actually. And he started the first newspapers here in Brownsville and he started the American, also American Statesman, what was, I guess, the progenitor of that. You know, talking about Ford as a writer.
Right.
You know, and, uh, he was quite a character. Uh, my great, great, my great grandfather Louis Cowan came from, uh, Poland to New York. Went to Mexico, met Neal's daughter and married her and settled in Brownsville. And so the Cowans came from that. And there's, uh, Cowans all over the place.
Right.
Uh, out, you know, a bunch of cousins, whatever. Uh, Cowan was originally, it's a Jewish name, meaning priest in Hebrew. And, uh, he, uh, what was it? Originally was a practicing Jew, but the family lore is that their first child, uh, when it was born, uh, was a hemophiliac and when it was circumcised, passed and died because of the circumcision, but.
Wow.
That is accurate, but that, you know, he, he wasn't a Jew. I didn't practice his faith after that. He became an Episcopalian. Because his wife was an Anglican. She was a, and so, uh, I graduated from Brownsville High School a little early. I should have graduated in sixty-nine, but I got up in sixty-eight, uh, to catch up for a failed fourth grade. Because I missed too many homeworks, as the teacher wrote in my failure report, which I thought was kind of interesting. Yeah, I read at the ninth grade level and, uh, but my math was a terrible problem at the time, but anyway. Uh, it was, uh, there was always an economy between where you were intellectually and where they evaluated you in the classroom, which I always found, you know, disconcerting. I guess everybody does. Anyway, I, I went to Texas Southmost College and one year and two summers, I got fifty-nine hours. And when my sixty-nine graduating class was, uh, would have been graduating class was getting, starting as a freshman at UT, I was a junior.
Wow.
And then I graduated University of Texas in nineteen seventy-one with, um, magna cum laude.
Yeah.
A three-point-nine GPA, uh, and I was on top of the world, but I did it too fast and I got drafted. So, uh, but it wasn't the end of the world. I, I, uh, joined the army and I wanted to be a journalist in the service. Uh, I turned down a commission in the, uh, what was it? Coast Guard. I didn't want to do that. I didn't know you could be a journalist on the Coast Guard too. Because, but, uh, Alex Haley was.
Yeah.
Uh, but, why, so I, I was a journalist in the service, was a reporter for United States Army Medical Command Europe. And then I was a, uh, what was it? Later on, the editor of the MedCom Examiner, which was a, uh, about a sixteen-page, no, eight to sixteen pages, depending what was going on. Uh, instrument, uh, newspaper that was served about five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand soldiers and a minute and a half, minute, minute and a half dependents. So there's a big circulation and we produce permanent information for the troops so they would know, you know, what's it? What their medical resources were and availability.
Yeah.
And, uh, it was, it was good. Uh, while I was in the service, I attended Boston University and got a masters. Graduated with high honors there and I got it in secondary education. When I got out, I worked for BISD a little bit. And then I went to work at various governmental programs in Hidalgo County. And, uh, eventually I decided to get out of government work completely in nineteen seventy-eight and went to work for, uh, my then, uh, father-in-law, Taylor Sutcliffe's junior in a customs brokerage firm that he, he had had it before. And then he lost his business to, just because he was not taking care of things. And then he got it back and I helped him bring it together. Uh, he lost it again, but I stayed in the business and since I got my broker's license and passed the test in nineteen eighty and got my license in, uh, just January is eighty-one. And I've been on license United States Customs Broker since. Uh, what I do in the customs brokerage business now, I've done everything you can think of, maculadoras, all kinds of, you know, different businesses, grain, you name it. But my primary work right now was I handle fuel shipments for, uh, a company called PMI Trading Designated Activity Corporation, which is a trading arm of PEMEX. And we ship two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-and-fifty trucks of diesel and gasoline, some aviation gasoline and some isobutane go to Mexico. And then we also ship about three train loads of, uh, different refined, uh, fuels, diesel and gasoline to Nuevo Laredo, Cabareta, Andera, Cuato.
Yeah.
We ship on a regular basis. We did a train yesterday and we did like three-hundred trucks yesterday too, so we're pretty busy.
Wow.
And the, the bus drivers asked me if I knew anything about truckers and I said, yes, I do. I know how to deal with truckers.
Yeah.
And so we, we work it and, uh, I, um, was, I served on the school board, uh, nineteen eighty-six to eighty-nine. And I was very proud, uh, that I was part of the board that, uh, was one of the plaintiffs, uh, the ending plaintiff, but nevertheless, we were one of the plaintiffs in the Edgewood versus Kirby, a decision which, uh, equalized education in the state of Texas. And I was saddened to hear that Governor Abbott wants to end that next year and stop, uh, equalizing education and let the rich districts, you know, charge very little tax and just leave the rest of the board districts to flounder. I hope he reconsiders that because it would devastate Brownsville.
Yeah.
Uh, devastate every single school system in the valley. And the valley, the region one is one of the most successful regions. It is the most successful region in the state of Texas, you know, and it's because of that Robin Hood plan where the excess money from the just, rich districts is spread throughout all of Texas to make sure we have a quality of education.
Right, right.
Also worried about the other thing, we're trying to get rid of Pire versus Doe.
Okay.
Which is essentially, uh, forced school system to educate non-citizens.
Uh-huh.
And one time, a prior was the superintendent in Tyler, Texas, and, uh, he was forced by law in Texas not to educate illegal alien children.
Wow.
You know, whether there were citizens or not, it wasn't clear. And this Supreme Court said, you have to educate these people because under the Fourteenth Amendment, they're persons, as noted in the Fourteenth Amendment. And they, uh, not to educate it would do an injustice to them. Well, they want to end that and go back to what it was and not educate these kids. And they want to challenge that, uh, next year. And we're not talking about four years from now. We're talking about January.
Wow, wow.
Again, they get the voucher program in place. Uh, I'm running for nothing. Because a school system in Brownsville is an independent organization, may end next year.
Okay.
We may have just a statewide education, you know, a school, a school board. If you want to raise now, you got to go to Austin to get it done. So hopefully, you know, we can get it done. One of the reasons I'm running, besides I have a bunch of concerns for teachers and everything else, is I think with the right type of school board, you can stop there.
Yeah.
If you're able to express yourself and explain yourself and talk to the legislature and convince them, you can stop it. But if you can't and if you can't essentially articulate the issues and combat this, we may lose our local control. And it does concern me. It concerns me greatly. The quality of people who get elected is very important. And the reasons why people run, uh, is very important.
Right.
Uh, in terms of, uh, I've, I've mentioned my education, some of the goals I have, and I mentioned this last night to the, uh, Association of Brownsville Educators, that's a, a part of the Texas Teachers Association and National Education, uh, Association. And one of them, uh, my main concern right now because of, you know, this madness we have where an eighteen-year-old can buy, a disgruntled eighteen-year-old can buy an AR fifteen and, you know, carry a gun all the way to the school, A school, and not be stopped because we have open carry.
Right.
That I'm very concerned about setting up some kind of system to protect our schools. Every school in Texas, every child that goes to school is endangered.
Right.
It's just incredible that we have this system. So my number one goal is to make sure these schools are safe and every facility we have in the school system is safe. You know, I don't want to see what happened and while they happen in Brownsville or anywhere in the valley.
Right.
We've had horrible things happen, careless things. The Alton bus crap, uh, crash that happened where they lost the thirty-one kids. I remember that. I was on the board back in the eighties when that happened. That was just devastating.
Right.
You know, actually it was in the early nineties, you know, when that took place, but it was just, it's horrible, whatever. I want to make sure that our teachers are fairly compensated. We're not just competitive, but we're competitive locally. That we give teachers a living wage, our staff a living wage. And I want to recognize incumbency and, uh, seniority. You, you have to do it. I don't think it's fair that if you have a person that's been working twenty years in the school system and they raised salaries to fifteen dollars an hour, that a starting person makes fifteen dollars an hour. Also, I mean, that person who's been working twenty years should make more because his, uh, incumbency should be rewarded.
Yeah, we lost you on the cameras, sir.
I'll put you back. I think I just hit it wrong. You know how it is. I apologize.
No problem.
Uh, and I'm concerned about, uh, working conditions and I don't mean, you know, that people are slave drivers and push their people to, you know, the bone in terms of, uh, trying to work them to death. But just, you know, contentment at work.
Right.
Reducing stress levels, you know.
Right.
Not having people having to worry all the time about make sure they can keep their job or worried about getting chewed out by a principal or a staff member or whatever else it is. I mean, we need to work on that.
Yeah.
And there is a way for a board member to make a difference. You ask the superintendent to put something in place to monitor that and then you get reports on it.
Right.
And you say, we want this stress level to remain low so people can work, you know, happy.
Right.
People should like to go to work. They shouldn't dread it.
Right.
And one more, I see teachers, they used to come home at three-thirty-five. They're coming home at four-thirty, four-forty-five. Teachers are complaining to me about not getting their planning period. It's just preemptive with no notice. Uh, they can't take a full lunch hour. They get a half an hour lunch and they can't even take all of that.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, they, we need to work on, you know, working conditions at school. Uh, I think we need to have good facilities, you know. When I was on the board, I was a part of the board that built Rivera, uh, what was it? Not Ha, we rebuilt Hannah this four, three years ago completely, but I rebuilt, we built Rivera, Lopez, Victoria, Morningside, Gonzalez, Southmost, uh, Burns, and, uh, I mean, thirteen schools, Ollie Aiken, thirteen schools in total were built during the various times that I was on the board. From nineteen eighty-six to eighty-nine and eighty-two to ninety-five.
Yeah.
And then we set and placed something where the board can do it. And we did it in those days without a bond issue.
Yeah.
The funding was different. If we had a spur, if we couldn't spend all the money, we were allowed to move it into fund balance. You can't do that anymore, but we did it.
Yeah.
You know, but we were able to do it. Uh, in terms of competing with charters and other private schools, uh, yeah, I think what your charter is to me, basically a public-private school. Uh, we need to have magnet programs, you know, something that would draw parents to want to send their kids to a particular school. I think at Burns, they had this one room with a bunch of pianos in it.
Yeah.
You know, and having a magnet piano program at a school, somebody in a magnet dancing. Burns got a great dancing program. A couple of other high, and elementaries got great ballroom dancing programs for little ones. You ought to see them. They're just really good at what they're doing.
Yeah.
Better than that.
Yeah.
Ever was I good at a dancer?
Yeah.
You know, but it was, uh, it's just incredible. But you get, but I was a part of the school board. When I was president of the school board, ninety-three to ninety-five, we brought in, when the, the first time, uh, first term, we brought in the gifted and talented program.
Mm-hmm.
And parents went nuts over there.
Yeah.
You know, new, and we based ours on New York City's.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, New York City just got rid of theirs. We don't want to get rid of ours. This is a great program, you know, because it affects us. But we were able to implement programs at our high schools and middle schools for, you know, maths, medical, law enforcement and other specialty areas, which made a difference. Uh, for some reason, some of the boards, later on, before I got on the board, uh, were, removed some of their programs and moved them to one of the high schools.
Right.
You know, and it didn't spread it out. I mean, the worst case was Porter, that was a nationally recognized engineering program. And it was taken away from them. The teachers were moved out.
I remember that, yeah.
That was, I mean, that should have never happened. It was put there for a reason.
Right.
And it, and to make the kids proud that they were going to that school and not want to have to leave to go some other school or whatever. So it was something. But you need those kind of programs.
Well, sir, one of the things, one of the things I want to ask you is, you know, you, uh, mentioned it early on and that's with Ri, regards to, uh, school safety. I mean, definitely, you know, Uvalde was a tragedy and there's all kinds of, you know, there's all kinds of people advocating certain things. You know, one side advocates that we should arm our teachers, that we should have designated armed teachers. Others believe that, you know, we should, um, you know, focus on, you know, mental health. Um, you know, obviously there's other things we can do. I mean, my experience with, uh, children, I worked for a company previously. It was a government contractor. We sheltered children, undocumented children and, uh, you know, I had a pretty sophisticated, uh, video surveillance and magnetic door lock security system in place to ensure that, you know, nobody came in that didn't have to be there and nobody got out. Um, what are the kind of things, what's your position, obviously, with regards to arming teachers? And, you know, what other things can we do besides that? I mean, I feel that that's an extreme, uh, position with regards to that. I mean, I graduated in nineteen eighty-nine from Porter, okay? And I can tell you, we were open campus. All fights were settled with a fistfight. You know, and we didn't have a whole lot of police. In fact, I don't even think campus police, uh, you know, even existed back then. It was a very small department, I believe. So, I mean, what's your position on that? Because that's a very touchy subject these days. Is the solution to armed teachers or can we do other things? Video surveillance, closed campuses?
I'm going to answer this, uh, you know, go around a little bit and answer them. Well, first of all, I'll give you a little history. I was the president of the school board when we started our police force.
Okay.
You know, and I couldn't believe when we did it, how expensive it was. We went from zero to two and a half million dollars in one year.
Wow.
And, I mean, that was something, but we did it. And Dr. Zick was the superintendent. We needed to do it. We had issues going on. We had people coming onto the campuses, you know, that shouldn't have been there. We had discipline problems on the campuses. Uh, we had untrained, uh, not security, but kind of like, I guess, hall monitors and other stuff. They were all like tough guys, almost like school bouncers or something.
I remember those.
You know, they were a little rough, you know, and I said, we needed to train people because, you know, you couldn't just grab a kid, throw him against the wall. Because a couple of times, you know, we had complaints about that we never could prove it because it wasn't filmed. Today, everything would be filmed. Because, you know, there's surveillance everywhere now on campuses, you know. So I, I, I mean, I did it right. And then a few years ago, when I was on the board bef, this last term, uh, we hired, I think about, I was thinking thirty-two or thirty-three officers. After the, whenever the Santa Fe, uh, shooting took, the Santa Fe High School shooting took place. We were very concerned and we hired, uh, you know, we increased the police force by about a third. And we put a lot of people out there. It didn't put one police officer on every particular campus, but we did increase the number of police officers. And the key to these things are, these are trained people. These are not just security guard that go through and work for like a security agency or, you know, some kind of a place that's going to watch the junkyard at night or something. These people are trained. There are, there are officers who pass the T-close in their rating.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and so, and, and to answer your question, I don't have a problem with, uh, teachers being armed, but only as a last resort.
Okay.
I mean, school board can't do it, and I think they can. I mean, I, I just don't see any reason why we can't. But if they can't do it, and if we can't figure out some way to get the AR fifteens away from disgruntled, unhappy eighteen-year-olds that want to buy them, you know, and we can't figure out some way to spread, not allow somebody to walk with such a powerful weapon within a mile of a school. Like you can't bring a joint of body one not close to a school or you can make, you know, prison time for having that, you know? And if you just have an open door policy for people to come and shoot up our schools, you know, if those teachers in Uvalde had a gun, and I don't mean what stops a bad person from, you know, with a, with a gun is a good person with a gun, you know, that's not it. But if there was nothing there and then what didn't happen in terms of the response by law enforcement, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine law enforcement's officers waited an hour and fifteen, sixteen minutes, you know, and nineteen children are killed. And I think another four, uh, or three, uh, other people, teachers were killed. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
If somebody had a gun there, that person, maybe they wouldn't have stopped it all, but it would have stopped something. So as a last resort, you know, I think that we, we, if society won't do anything, we're going to have to arm our teachers.
Right. Now, what about?
The world, but that's a last resort.
Yeah. Now, what about evaluating the physical buildings? I mean, I recall when I was in high school, sir. I mean, you could, you, you could go into any part of the building, it was open. You could go in through the band hall.
That's not the case anymore. That's not the case anymore. They don't, they don't allow people just to walk in anymore and they need an ID to get on campuses and some other stuff.
Yeah.
Some issues about IDs and running it through, but there, there are things today that exist that didn't exist when you were in high school. It certainly didn't exist when I was in high school. You know, facial recognition, you know, somebody come in, if you have students on a campus and you have them all screened in, um, you know, elementary, middle school, high school, whatever. You have all screened in and they're in the system, you can pick up who belongs, that doesn't belong. You can do that now.
Yeah.
You know, some parents might not like it. The other thing is, if you have these within the school and around the perimeter of the school, within several blocks around the school, you have, uh, a security system set up that will identify long rifles. You probably, they can't identify a pistol in somebody's pocket, but you can identify long rifles. You might be able to pick up some bulges in somebody's back pocket or something that may look a little strange or pick up metal or whatever. But the technology is there to be able to detect something. So if somebody were to come toward a campus with a long stick, you know, which is a rifle.
Right.
And the security system would pick it up, that school would immediately go into lockdown. Immediately locked doors, immediately everything. That would be able to, and that can be done right now. You don't wait twenty years or anything like that. And it's not that expensive. The facial recognition is not that expensive. There's some concerns about getting it done in terms of, well, who's going to, you know, we have to hire all this staff to go get it done. No, you don't. You register people at the beginning of the year. You have the children, you know, put into the system. And then, you know, especially with young kids, as they age, you update it.
Right.
You know, and, uh, it, it, it sounds a little crazy maybe, but you know, anybody stopped on a campus by a staff member, you can check and, you know, just wander and see who they are. Who are you?
Right.
They can say, what class you're supposed to be in. They, they just look at you and they'll know where you're supposed to be. We have that now.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, uh, there was a, a movement to use cell phones for that. And that's not an idea, but cell phones sometimes can be really intrusive on the instructional program as well.
Right.
You know, so a lot of teachers don't like that.
Right.
And so, then that's something I think that, that goes against trying to use cell phones as a way to identify students.
Right.
It is not a bad idea, but.
Right.
There, there's the, the, it's, the software is out there for staff members on campus to be able to determine who's on campus and who belongs on campus and that. The other thing is, there's a debate as to, you know, should the, the local campus, you know, an individual campus run an ID program to screen parents and people coming on the campus? Or should it be run from the main office? And I, I remember one time in the school system, there was a child was picked up at one of the schools by an uncle and taken home and assaulted.
Oh, gosh.
I know it was terrible. This was twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four years ago or whatever. Shouldn't have happened or whatever. And I, I remember one time in the school system, there was a child was picked up at one of the schools by an uncle and taken home and assaulted.
Oh, gosh.
I know it was terrible. This was twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four years ago or whatever. Shouldn't have happened or whatever. And the person wasn't on the list to pick up the child. They just talked their way into it. You know, by being able to, uh, dive in at the main office, not at the campus level, and that was the problem with it, the main office, they screened who goes onto the campus, and it's just very quickly. Somebody's there, run us through the IDs, they can get on.
Right.
You know, and the parents want to avoid the delay getting in to go see their kids or doing something over there. Register in advance, get it up, participate, you know, get in the system. With what happened in Uvalde, we have to make some adjustments in our lives to protect the children we send to school.
Absolutely.
You know, and the technology is there, let's use it. It's not that expensive. And, uh, I mean, it's really not that expensive. And look, look, I don't run my life on my cell phone, but all my children do.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Their life, their life has changed. I know you do. You live there. You're comfortable with it.
Yeah.
But anyway, I hope I answered your question up to a point.
Yeah, I wanna chime in in, in another area. You know, obviously, the pandemic taught us quite a bit over the last two years, and it actually, it actually exposed some flaws with regards to internet connectivity. And, you know, I had the county judge on last night, you know, there's an initiative in the county to try to see about allocating some federal funds for internet access, because one of the things that we discovered, you know, with the pandemic is that there's a lot of our students out there that don't have internet access. In fact, if you recall, sir, you know, there was lines, uh, you know, at the early start of the pandemic, trying to get a, a hotspot or even a Chromebook. Uh, what do you think we should, uh, do moving forward? So that we can ensure that we've got, uh, that our students have the available resources, internet connectivity and Chromebooks, access to laptops, so that, God forbid, the next time we have a, a pandemic of some sort and an emergency, we can respond, uh, so that our students are not kinda left behind trying to struggle to get their work done. And then, as a follow-up question to that, you know, there was, there appeared to be a, a, uh, heavy, a, a bumpy ride, excuse me, with some of our teachers at the start of the pandemic. They struggled with online instruction. Maybe some of the teachers were older, I don't know, but basic things like connecting onto Zoom and doing PowerPoint. They kinda seemed to struggle. Some even complained publicly about it. So, you know, if you could kinda focus on those two areas that I've just covered right now.
Well, I'd like to cover the second part, cause I witnessed it. Oh, my wife was a teacher, teaching second grade. And she struggled, not as much with Zoom, cause that was pretty easy, but Zoom had its drawbacks in terms of, you know, if you're not worried here with this Zoom in terms of identi- information that somebody might glean from Zoom about your personal life.
Right.
And district went to Microsoft Teams.
Correct.
Teams would have been more complicated, and they required training, and my wife just had a difficult time trying to put teams together with, and they had several other programs and tried to put four or five things together to do it. It took a while. She struggled. She didn't cry through the process, but she complains through the process pretty roughly. And a lot of teachers did too. The, the administration was pretty good. They designated at, at the Hudson where she was, and a lot of schools did this. The librarian was the one that took the lead on that and working with the teachers, you know? And some people were able to handle it, and some people that just, you know, it, it wasn't that, in the least. A teacher at one of the schools, I won't say which school, she quit.
Oh, my gosh.
Just quit. I'm not gonna do it. I'm gonna stay home. And she resigned. She was at that age where she could, and
Yeah.
you know, so they had to put a permanent substitute in for that semester. I think the lady came back to work full-time and stayed there.
Yeah.
But one of my, well, I knew about it, cause one of my employees, uh, was, uh, what was it? Uh, one of her children had the teacher.
Yeah.
It was second grade, not a third grade. It was a second grade class, and it was just kind of a, uh, amazing thing. But, uh, that campus, the principal worked with the librarian, with the staff, and dealt with them, and they went through training and session. Uh, it's a campus-based issue to dealing, dealing with. I know it's kinda passing the buck from administration to there, but we do have campus-based education, it's campus-based management and site-based management. And, you know, that, if, there's problems, it's gonna really be a, a particular campus that's gonna be taking place, and the campus needs to address it. That's the front line.
Yeah.
And if, if they can't get it, then they can use resources for the main office to deal with it, and they need to have people at the campus that know who to call at the main, the main office to get it done.
Right.
You know, and that should, you know, and so what some of the, you know, problems are, was this communication line wasn't worked out. But I never saw it being overwhelmed, but it was stressful for teachers. My wife loves the computer. She gets on, she has laptops, she has everything, but she did struggle with it, you know?
Yeah.
Now, going to the other question that you have about some of the problems we had with, uh, essentially disconnectivity.
Right.
You know, and we see that all over the world, you know, and you have people trying to bring the world together. It's, uh, Marshall McLuhan's, you know? The big audience out there, they wanna, the family of man would join together in one big, you know, I guess, Facebook meeting or something. Or whatever, you know, and, and we're, we're trying to do that. I remember a conversation I had a guy I met, we had a meeting at the BIST, the Chamber of Commerce, City of Brownsville County, and some other people, and somebody from Spectrum was there to announce, well, we've got this great program where we're gonna reduce the access to the internet from sixty dollars to, I think it was eighteen dollars.
Right.
And I told him, we don't know, some of our parents, they don't have eighteen dollars. They're not gonna be able to connect up, cause they don't have the extra eighteen dollars to do it. You know, they go to the campus to feed themselves and their children in the afternoon, so that that's supper for a lot of our kids. Not for everybody, for a lot. We had this Brownsville breakfast program that had six thousand people, you know, families doing it after school, the same thing, six, five, six thousand people. And it's something that's still going on, it was a problem. But I remember telling this guy, in the future, and we know this from long distance, because nobody pays for long distance anymore.
Right.
Okay, you pay for access. In the future, what companies like Spectrum need to do, and other companies, and Amazon's got the message, Netflix, and everybody, you're gonna pay, sell content.
Right.
Not access.
Correct.
Sell content, not access. That's the critical thing. And while I was on the board, you know, last, uh, time I was on the board, was able to take, uh, with the technology, ran the committee for a little bit, and curriculum ran the committee for a little bit, cause it kept moving us around, feeding them on, taking us off, you know, different politics that were going on. You probably remember. I'm glad that's over. But anyway, and we were able to get a kind of a, uh, joint effort with the city of Brownsville to ask for grants, so that we could have citywide, and it would be co-terminous with the school system as well, internet connection.
Right.
And then we're gonna build in, and BIST's got a heck of a system. Okay, we, we actually can get broadcast signals to a lot of neighborhoods. You gotta be a thing with mile, mile and a half or whatever, and you get a fairly decent thing. But you can work on that, those trunk lines, and expand on it to everybody in the city of Brownsville, you know, could, uh, have access, and that they're working on that.
Yeah.
It's a little harder when you leave Brownsville, you go to those personals, cause there's a lot of areas in between. There's nothing there, and that's a little hard, but you got satellite, other things can fill in the gap.
Right.
You know, but, and the city of Brownsville is working on that right now in conjunction with the county. Texas Southmost College and the University of Texas, World Randy, you know, they're all joined together to get it done. I'm not sure if, I don't think the navigation district is in it, but I know those four, uh, entities are working together.
Yes, I believe that they're.
But it, it's in the, it's in the works, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah, and I had, uh, two county commissioners a couple of months ago on the show, and yes, there is a fiber initiative within the city to provide fiber connectivity, internet connectivity to, to that. And last night, as I mentioned, the county judge is trying to get the citizens out there to fill out a survey to cover the areas of the county that even after all this has been done here in Brownsville, that there's still gonna be a need for that. Um, you know, but with regards to, you know, um, what are the, some of the things that you think we, we learned from the pandemic? That you feel we should improve as far as, you know, BISD goes, you know? I mean, it's not a matter of when the, uh, if the next pandemic will get here, it's just a matter of when. So, have you given it some thought about the things that we could do better that we just didn't do or miss the mark on, you know, over the last two years, sir?
Well, I think we missed the mark initially.
Yeah.
You know, and every school system in the valley did, because they were not ready with the volume of the uh, hardware that we needed to be able to put into the hands of students. We really did.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, uh, I think we learned too, not to sneer at Chromebooks. You know, I, I know, I've always hesitated to buy one, but I'll tell you what, they're actually pretty good. If you can access the websites you wanna go to, and you're not worried about saving something on your hard disk, like you wanna play music, this and that, you just might have something to use right then. And their Chromebooks are pretty effective, and you get a pretty good signal.
Right.
You know, uh, something equally, uh, Apple tremendous at the early grade levels.
Right.
For the kids, they just, my, my grandchildren, they go like this with the apples. I'd see if I could get it. They put it in that one. What are they doing? I say, I'm, I'm changing my device. I got my device going, you know, they get it. When they were two years old and doing it.
Yeah.
Fourteen years old, they're still using the finger and changing pages and stuff like that. They, they got. But we, we've got a little behind, but we, we did it pretty quickly.
Yeah.
And it took maybe four or five months to put, uh, hardware and instruments, devices into the hands of every student.
Right.
And with those devices, we also sent out to cover the, the gap in terms of connectivity, hotspots with them.
Correct.
We put them at home, and one hotspot could serve the whole family.
Right.
And we don't have families, like when you were young or I was, I come from a family of eleven. Probably need two hotspots in the house. We had that. You might have had, you know, a couple of brothers and sisters, one would cover everybody.
Right.
You know, but there was a hotspot. And so, we, we learned that. If the signal wasn't that great, but it did work. There was, uh, at Putnan Elementary, there's a, they, a, uh, nursery across the street. I think it's where Dr. Longoria used to have his office, uh, if you know Ruth and, uh, well, it was original with Gomez and, uh, Dolores Zarate. Anyway, their, their dad at their office there. Anyway, it's a nursery school now.
Yeah.
And they didn't have the internet set up the way they needed it. So, but a lot of kids at the school were being left there by the parents, cause they needed to work, and they were Putnan students. And they dropped a few hotspots off at that school and took care of about thirty kids with it. Use your head, you know, and then get some stuff done. That, that was good.
Yeah.
But I, I think we could learn. But one of the things that we need to learn, the, the, the lesson we need to learn is for everything we do, for every event in a child's life, you know, this young student's life, you know, we can use this connectivity and these types of instruments to connect, even if a child's at home disabled and unable to attend. So we don't have to cut off somebody, you know, just because some tragic events happens in their life and they have to go through something. There can be some connection. And, you know, if we have a child get a cold and needs to stay home, they're not wiped off the face of the earth. They're just got a cold snip, and they don't wanna spread the disease, or the germs or whatever they might have. They have the flu, whatever. Once they get a little bit better, you know, and it goes up and down. Everybody's been through the flu. You feel better sometimes, or the other doctor, you wanna talk to me? How are you doing? Did you have a chance to look at your lesson this? Perking them up, connect, whatever, you know? To the extent you can, we can stay connected to those, uh, students and children.
Right.
You know?
Right.
And that's something that, you know, we, we did it, and we stay connected, but we shouldn't stop connecting just because we're back in school.
Right.
We need to connect it. And then if you have an issue at home with homework, whatever, tutors, whatever, use it.
Right.
But, you know, I mean, it's not just, you know, I remember when I was a kid and I had a problem at home, and I couldn't figure out what was going on or whatever. I had nobody, I had older brothers and sisters. I was number five out of eleven or whatever, but sometimes I just didn't have anybody I could ask questions, cause, you know, do you know? No, I don't. Somebody else, no, I don't. But laptop there, you can call up a tutor and get something worked out, have somebody available. Some, some schools did that.
Yeah.
Set up, uh, you know, kind of a homework guru that's available for students, and other schools didn't.
Yeah.
But, you know, uh, that technology needs to be part of the entire educational process.
Yeah.
And your vocabulary and my vocabulary, if we had had Google search when we were young, I'm seventy-two, and if I had it when I was fourteen or twelve, I would know five times the vocabulary today, five times of the knowledge that I, you know, and the same thing with you.
Yeah.
You use the read and not look at the word.
Yeah, as I tell my daughter, if I had access to what you have access, I would have been valedictorian. So.
The valedictorian is a valedictorian.
Sir, one of the things that you mentioned, and I wanna touch on briefly, is the uh, issue of charter schools. And I'll be honest with you, I'm coming from the perspective as a parent. Uh, I sent my daughter to private school from K-three to sixth grade. And then we made the switch over to IDEA, a charter school. And to be quite honest with you, um, we pulled her out of IDEA and put her into public school. And there is a lot of reasons for that. Primarily, um, obviously, the, the charter schools today don't have the extracurricular activities. My daughter was into music and choir and things like that, and the charter schools didn't offer that. And so, we went the full circle. We went from private school to charter school and a public school. And I personally believe, and I know that some people may not agree with me, but I believe that putting her in public school was the best choice in the end. But what I see lately is what I consider a threat from the charter schools when it comes to, uh, poaching students from the public school. You know, they have a selective process that they go through. They pick and choose, they cherry pick this type of students they want. And that affects the graduation rates that they, uh, somehow boast about. And so, my question to you is, what can the public school system do to stop the poaching of public s- schools? The, the poaching of students from public schools, so that they don't get lured to these charter schools? Cause why, quite honestly, I'm not impressed with the charter school system. That's just me. But that's because of a parent's perspective. So can you chime in a little bit on that and what you think, what we can do?
Uh, one of the things I think that, uh, BISD can stress, uh, and needs to stress is the separation of kids by age.
Mm-hmm.
A pre-K through fifth grade does not need to be on the campus with a seventh through a twelfth grade.
Mm-hmm.
Which is something you don't wanna do. And one of the things I was concerned, if I had a daughter, whatever else it is, is you have adults, essentially nineteen, twenty-year-old high school kids, some of them a little late over there, that, you know, are on the same campus as kids. And maybe you could try to separate them, whatever else it is. We have one campus, Aiken, uh, and Posito, uh, that they, they're kind of middle school and an elementary together, but they're really separated, you know, mix them up. I don't like this business of having pre-K, three-year-old all the way to twelfth grade. I think that's wrong.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I think that you need to create the enti- deal with the entire human being as a child.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and my daughter, I remember one time, an English teacher told me that music was an extracurricular activity. And I said, no, music for my daughter is not an extracurricular activity. It's an expression of her being.
Mm-hmm.
She needs music to survive.
Right.
You know, she gets reading, she gets some math and everything, but she has that outlet where she needs to express herself hormonally, you know, in terms of harmony. You know, is what I mean. Uh, she needs to express herself, you know, with the music of the spirit, you know, that love of music that she had. And I saw that when she picked up for the, about the fifth time, and she got a clarinet. It was a B-flat clarinet, and she made a beautiful sound with it.
Mm-hmm.
And she clapped it. I loved it. I saw that, and I said, that she has that with her. My fifty-one-year-old, uh, who, uh, is in, wasn't a service, retired, now he works in the same job, in, in military intelligence, but as a private contractor. He learned to play guitar. He played classical guitars, Savoyar, Beal Obos, these, you know, just tremendous, you know, guitars, you know? He likes Johnny Cash too, you know, so. But he, he, he's got it, and this, these extracurricular activities are what make the the, a complete human being. I mean, you know, it makes you who you are.
Right.
And that's not, and, and then elementary school, they don't stress it, but in elementary school, we have all these different programs that we can offer. Uh, Canavas has a music program, Burns has a music program, Burns has a dance program, lots of special things that you can have at different campuses. Uh, I think we need to go back to specialties at campus, so we can attract kids with special talents, you know, unusual things that they can do and, and say, at this campus, you want your child to learn this, you know? Uh, you can, you can send them there, and, you know, Uh, you can, you can send them there and, you know, charters are trying to, I guess, you know, plain vanilla wrapper for education. And education, your, your children need more than that.
Right.
The problem with charters. For B I S D, B I S D wasn't looking over a shoulder for the longest time and B I S D wasn't worried for the longest time. This is in between when I got up and wore ninety-five and two thousand sixteen. They weren't looking over their shoulder and realized. That the charters were basically incompetent back in their early. Two thousand, you know, two thousand and one of those periods and ninety-four, ninety-six, ninety-eight, you know, they, they were not really good at all. And then there was a certain amount of competence built into them. So at least they could provide a basic plain vanilla wrapper, education for children.
Right.
You know, they can come through and, and, you know, and so a lot of parents built into it. Uh, and they bought it. The other thing, and I, I want to push this hard. I couldn't get it done when I was on the board before was. Anybody wants a bus ride to school? I don't care if they live across the street, give it to them. Because charters poach a lot of our students because they just are willing to drive across the street and bring the child to school. You know, and, you know, and then they do it right and left.
Right.
And, and parents need to know on school buses, sometimes they go to Burger King and drop kids off and you have to go pick them up.
Right.
Good place to leave your children.
No.
B I S D will never leave a child, you know, at a Burger King or something like that.
Right.
In one case is over there with Montdon for Delcasio, there was an idea bus dropping kids off. This was when I was on the board. Four years ago, three and, three and a half years ago, a bus stopping kids off and the kids could walk over on our campus for safety. But they left the kids. I think it was, I think, and you, you don't do that.
Right.
I mean, and, and so you, you have to educate the, the whole being, not just, you know, it's not just cognitive.
Right.
You know, it's effective domain has to be dealt with too, you know, and you have to deal with all of it. And I think they missed it and I, I don't see any way that, you know, because of the model there. The other thing is. If, on some of the charters, some of the ideas go, not all of them, because I don't know all of them, but some of them I complain about, there's problems with discipline and some places violence.
Right.
You know, that, you know, we, they don't have a security force that we have on our campuses to go ahead and keep that down and protect our children.
Right.
You know, so I don't think your children are as safe at, at an idea or a Jubilee school as they are within Brownsville I S D. Because we've got, uh, schools, you know, you go to the main office at B I S D for the police station that is, and they can watch everything.
Right.
From that office, they see it, you know, they know what's going on.
Right.
You know, and that, that's a tremendous asset B I S D has to protect your child.
Right.
And, uh. But, uh, you know, it's not the end of the world, but it's not enough.
Right.
And, uh, I think, uh. One of the things charters do is they play on friendship, the children have with each other and the kids don't want to break up their friendship. And, you know, they start second grade and they're going to stay till fourth grade, whatever.
Right.
The dividing line seems to be going to middle school.
Right.
Like, you know, people say, you know what, I tried it here. It got a meat and potato, the education, it wasn't important. I could pay, but you know, now it's starting to count.
Right, right.
You know, I, I, it's just not going to cut. I'm not going to have my child go to this school or that school and, you know, and just get, you know. The bare bones education and bare bones in the computer sense where you just have to put it all together. No. I love building computers.
Well, one last area that I wanted to talk about and you touched on it was with respects to teacher pay. And not only teacher pay, but what can we do to stay competitive across the valley and across the state? The other thing is obviously teacher retention. You know, there's a lot of teachers leaving the system as well. What can we do to try to retain some of that talent? And, and, you know, I'd like to kind of get your feel for that. I mean, what do you think we need to do? And not just teacher pay, but pay in general across the district. I mean, you touched on the fifteen dollar an hour movement for, you know, um, you know, classified. Is it classified or non-classified? I don't know which ones which.
Classified.
Classified, right. So, well, can, can you kind of chime in a little bit with regards to teacher pay retention? And, you know, pay your.
With both, really you need to look at because, you know, let's say a bus driver's, if, you know, a fifteen-year-old. Fifteen-year bus driver gets a fifteen dollars an hour, the same as a one-year bus driver. That bus driver, you know, has a lot of experience that you'll get more, better rewards. So you may not keep them. Somebody says, you know, I'll pay you so much for every year above so many years, you know, give you a thousand dollars a year for it or every two years or three years or whatever. Yeah, we can steal away your people, you know, in terms of the classified and some of the employees at the different, uh, what was it? Departments that are working that is important. In terms of teachers. Pay is important, but I think a teacher, if you want to keep a teacher, you know. You need to bring back step, real step increases and you need to fund them. Instead, step increases, if you started as a teacher and this was your fifth year saying, you started at forty-three thousand, now you're making forty-nine thousand. Okay, and you see every year in your step that you're going to get a thousand or every two years you get fifteen hundred or whatever. This built into, to your salary schedule, you know, then you know at the end of fifteen, sixteen years. You know, without any cost of living adjustments, suppose inflation and now it has gone up, suppose there were no inflation. I would be making seventy-two thousand at the end of twenty-five years or something like that. Then you retire seventy percent. You know, of that, that's fifty thousand, you retire and you get a second job, you know, you donate a substitute, you could do something else, whatever. Have a decent retirement, you know, income, you know, you could do that. That's, it, it's important. What's happened with boards and what boards you need to stop doing is believe in the administration every time they say, we don't have the money. So we're not going to fund the step increase. You know, that happened, that happens. And, you know, you, I believed it a couple of times, but then after a while I just said, nah. You know, you're going to tell, especially when we had fund balance we could keep, you know, you didn't have, you know, we can't give the money. So then we wind up with twenty-five million dollars left at the end of the year. And I said, I'm going to really complain at the end of the year. If you tell me we don't have money and we wind up with twenty-five million leftover fund balance. And we did. And said, I'm not going to believe you anymore. Sorry, we're not going to do it. But one of the ways to avoid this and it probably scare a C T financial officer, they call them CFOs. Is to make, put the step increases because teachers are contracted employees.
Yeah.
Put them in, in the teacher's contract, continuing contract. You start this issue the way it's going to go.
Yeah.
And then, you know, it takes it away from the board.
Right.
Takes it away from the administration to play games with it. And the administration knows, we got to fund this, we got to fund that.
Right.
You know, if you get to the point in the future where, you know, you, you have a reduced population, you know, and you're not serving as many people. You can offer incentives for people to retire early. They did it before and said, we'll give you twenty thousand dollars to get out early. So, you know, they're going to avoid five more years that, twenty thousand more a year.
Right.
Teacher wants to fire, they give a little bonus, they can go, you know, something to quit with if they want to, they don't have to.
Right.
The other thing was. Teacher, work on reducing stress. You know, just the happiness quotient, the comfort quotient, you know, that, that just has to be looked at. Are you happy with your job? Are you happy at your campus? Are you happy doing this and that? You know, and just figure out some way to monitor that and work with it and really address that, you know. It's, it's not an intangible. I think it can be addressed, you know, and I know it can be addressed because my daughter with Qualtrics. You know, does that for a living. She looks for, you know, different things, you know, evaluate this, that, whatever else it is. And they come up with highfalutin algorithms, you know, mathematical formulas to figure out what it is and you can't.
Yeah.
You really can't, you know. And it's got to be done, evaluated maybe by somebody independent, but we need to look at what's there. And then when you know their problems. Sometimes it's not across the district, sometimes it's at a campus. Figure out what's going on, what causes it and address it and get. You know, get the tension up. In my business, we do so many trucks. I've worked very hard. I pay people more because of the incumbency that I've recognized. You know, experience should be rewarded.
Right.
The other thing I'm concerned about is stress.
Right.
People burn out. And I said, no, you know, I mean, you want to work overtime? Up to a point, I'll give it to you, but I'm not going to let you work yourself to death. Take time to go be with your family, take time to do this. I've hired more people to go ahead and have, you know, more people available. So, you know, you, you're doing four hundred particular document, documents in a day.
Right.
You know, I have twelve, fourteen people working for you. They can get burnt out if you're not careful. A lot of it's very repetitive. You know, but you get burnt out. So you just, you know, have to be careful. And I'm built in the structures to be able to handle the thing.
Right.
But anyway, I, 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 I want to tell you that I really enjoyed talking to you. I've never met you before, but it, you know, I'm, I'm very pleased to have been on your program. And you're a very gracious host, you know, and I appreciate you asking me to come on and, and, you know, talk with you.
Not a problem, sir. Uh, you're welcome at any time. Uh, like I said, I know it's a little bit of a pain in the butt, you know, bugging you about coming on. I hope you don't mind, but you're always welcome. Could you tell us when the election is? It's in November?
It's October, October the twenty-fourth is when early voting takes place. The last two weeks, I think it ends on a Sunday. Uh, what was it? Before the eighth, something like that. And then, uh, the election is November eighth.
All right.
I, I don't think you're going to have forty-eight thousand people vote in this election as did. Well, actually, it's fifty-two thousand people voted in the B I S D area, but there was about eight thousand people that did, were no votes, they call them.
Right.
You know, but there were forty-six thousand people voted and they're saying, you got kind of lost and shuffled. That's kind of caused me some problems. Because, you know, people didn't know anybody.
Right.
So they just, you know, they didn't know who to vote for. And then there was the Trump part versus the Biden thing going on. The trial going on, if you remember with.
Right.
One of our school board members, which was a bad situation or whatever.
Right.
This will be, uh, a, a, an election where the constituencies, uh, you know, different constituencies are going to go out. And hopefully they'll pay attention to the school board races because they're very important.
Absolutely, sir.
And I stress very early here that with the right school board, if they're talking about trying to pass out vouchers and essentially, you know. Destroy the basic structure of our school system, which, and something, we use school systems to identify ourselves as communities. You know, we need strong people to be able to say, no, it's not a good idea of legislature. Let's preserve what we have. This is a good thing. So that your daughter can get the quality of education that you want for her and that extra career in her life, she needs to be able to be the person you, she wants to be. Not what you want to be, she wants to be when she goes.
Absolutely.
Thank you and embrace.
Yep. Alrighty, sir. Well, we appreciate the time that you've spent with us. And everybody, this is, uh, Mr. Philip T. Callen. He is running for B I S D School Board Place One. And the elections start early on October twenty-fourth. And, um, Philip, thank you once again for being on our show and we'll talk again soon.
Okay, thank you and God bless you and everybody.
Alrighty, bye-bye, sir.